The Tuesday, April the 12th, 2022, meeting of the Banks County Board of Commissioners. The first thing I need to do is the approval of the agenda, but we need to eliminate number eight. So we will delete number eight and move contracts to number eight, resolutions to number nine, executive session to 10, and adjournment to 11. All right, next, I need approval of the minutes from... Oh, yeah, we got a vote on it.
Make the motion to approve the agenda with a change.
Sammy and I think Danny.
Keith.
Keith. Heard both of you. Aye.
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 Four oh. Now, I'll ask for a motion to approve the minutes from 3:3, 3:8, and 3:22. Got a motion by Keith, second by Danny. Any discussion? Danny?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Next, pledge the flag. If you'll stand, I will lead us in the pledge of flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next up is the chairman's report. Last month, month of March, we had 319 fire department calls, 3,007 sheriff's office calls. We had 40 COVID cases per 100,000. And right now, we are in the process of getting up. We've got them with the rest of the cities for the renewal of the roads and bridges tax. We will be getting our list pretty soon. April the 25th, we will start budget hearings at 1:30. And like I say, congratulations to the 4-Hs. They were first in district. One of the teams was senior wildlife and marine science. The next one was junior animal dairy science. The next one was junior environmental science. And the last one was junior target sports. And they will be going to state competition, is my understanding. All right, next would be item number six. Child abuse prevention proclamation is Bledsoe, Tracy Bledsoe. She's not here. Need to see if I've got the resolution, because she was supposed to read it. Yeah, I got it. This month is Child Abuse Prevention Month, and we got the whole proclamation. But the last part is, "The Banks County Board of Commissioners does hereby proclaim the month of April 2022 as Child Abuse Prevention Month, urging all citizens to recognize this month by dedicating themselves to the task of improving the quality of life for all children and families." We will sign this 12th day of April 2022. I got a motion to accept the proclamation. Got a motion by Danny, second by Sammy. Any discussion? Not Sammy?
Aye.
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 Next is public hearing. I will close the regular meeting and open it up to the public hearing. Paul?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Item number for tonight is an ordinance to amend Article 4, the General Provisions, Section 417, home occupations, to delete that all applicants for home occupations must adhere before the Board of Commissioners of Banks County, to delete that only the Board of Commissioners of Banks County can approve a home occupation, to provide for an effective date, and to repeal conflicting ordinances and resolutions and for other purposes. Last week, the planning committee voted to recommend this amendment to the town square. Approved.
This is basically just going to email all of us, the business licenses come through, that does not need conditions to them or does not need approval. Anybody got any discussion? I'll make a motion to accept the recommendation of the planning board. I made the motion. Keith seconded it. Do we have any discussion? Keith?
Aye.
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 Pass four oh. Next is contracts and agreements. The first one's an indigent defense. I personally, I don't know why they sent this contract to us this soon. I personally would like to table this until the September meeting to find out more if we are going to be able to get in the mountain. I talked to Bo, our first meeting in September. Let me look up the date. And he says everything, Bo Hatchett, he said everything looked good right now. We'll move it to September the 13th, if that's the pleasure of the board, because this is not going to be in effect till January of 2023. And I mean, it's got a clause D in there due to the exit from circuit, and the event, Banks County is no longer within the Piedmont judicial circuit than the date. Banks County no longer within the Piedmont judicial circuit, blah, blah, blah. But, I mean, we're getting this thing way earlier than we normally do, and I'd make a motion to delay it to September 13th.
A and B is correct.
Yeah, both of them, A and B. A little off.
Yes. Mm-hmm.
I'll second.
But we'll do be here in just a second. We won't, we'll keep them separate. I made the motion, Sammy seconded it. Any discussion? Aye.
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 Four oh. Now, law clerk, do y'all want to do the same thing? You want to make a motion?
I'll make a motion. I'll second.
All right, Sammy made the motion, Danny seconded it. Any discussion? Danny?
Aye.
Aye.
And four, the last thing on that section is the propane bid. We got two bids. One of them from Piedmont Propane at $1.99, the second one's from Blossman Propane at $1.91. Piedmont gets 3% local vendor preferential, but that's still got them at $1.93. So Blossman is the lowest one at $1.91 per acre, and that's who we've got the contract with now.
How have they done this year, Charles?
Everything I've heard, they've done excellent. I mean, I haven't heard any complaint out of the sheriff's department, fire department. That's our main two users, and I haven't heard, haven't heard a complaint out of them. We got a motion to accept, Blossman.
I'll make the motion. Keith?
All right, Keith made a motion. You second it. Sammy?
Good.
Any more discussion? Sammy?
Aye.
Aye.
And aye. All right, number 10 is a resolution and ordinance for energy excise levy. It's basically a levy tax on manufacturing only. It's not sales tax or anything like that. It's just on manufacturing only. Every one of the cities in their meeting has approved the resolution. So we have an intergovernmental agreement with every one of them has signed it. I need a motion, if that's the pleasure of the board, for us to impact or start the energy excise levy tax. And if we do that, then Randy will notify all of the vendors, line of natural gas, LP companies, both power companies. So it'll probably take about two months for them to start the excise tax.
And all the cities did, like you said?
Every one of the cities unanimously approved it and signed off on it.
I'll make a motion.
Got a motion from Danny. I'll second. Any more discussion? Sammy?
Aye.
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 I need a motion to go into executive session for personnel and land.
Still move.
Got a motion by Danny, second by Keith. Keith?
Aye.
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 We will be back.
She didn't tell me she had a little unfavorable thing on her history. Yeah.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. I thought it was Sam and all of the salmon colored photographer. They look great. I had a teacher named Sam. So I never heard of Sam. I had a teacher named Sam. So I never heard of Sam. Sam. So, all right, please don't tell me. Yes. Well, so what they did was...
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you.
Hypocetic was something. Yes. Which was not good. Where? Where's that one? Where's that one? I'm guessing he's... So they threw... To throw a commission this one right here, or something. They voted against the child prevention. And what do they say? They voted against child prevention. What is that all? Is child prevention, or this, every, every key in this number is to, um, remember and bring awareness to child abuse, okay? So evidently, the public school is, and stuff like that, has a child abuse, and it's a great awareness, and maybe people, you know, have a place for donations to, or organizations, and stuff like that, and living in one of these. And ordinance to amend the general provision, how it was said. So this one right here was for people who want home occupation. Oh, home occupation. Yes. And so some of them don't have, don't need to come before, like, CPA, or something like that, or your son's or something. So those can do a home occupation, not have to go before the, before the commission. I think what you're saying is... The waiting venue, or something like that. But wait, what is this? So this is, this is simple stuff, one of them. Cooking, you know, bakery? No, I get, I get what you're saying, but the, the, the task is, they're saying that they want to, and then, or before, under this home occupation, to enable people to not have to come before the planning commission, or the, the, or commission. Do they still have to go before the planning commission? So if I want to... Wait, you're kidding me? I have to go to a home inspection, because I've got a computer, but it's going to... So I want to click and looking on my computer to do some Amazon marketing with Amazon, whatever. I got to go get the product to go with my computer. Yeah, yeah, that's... Okay. So it's making it a lot easier. I feel bad, but, but... As far as the detail? In some ways, yeah, because I think it's important to amend things, and how my occupation to allow, but I'm sort of like, what exactly? You don't have to go before them, like, they all have, I'm just sort of the same way. To what degree? Well, we, on some of the large scale, like, we have mentioned, like, like, or something like that, or something, you know, it's kind of... Yeah, so that's why, yeah, he's helping. Okay, cool. And then, uh, contracts and then, they were really, they did this, it wasn't a month. Yeah. So the indigenous, because, so what they're doing is tabling all the three, because, well, sorry, and they, they take those two, because they want to, to eat my choice, so they take them until September. I thought they wanted to go into the mountains. Where are the people? I know, and they want to, they want to go into the mountains. Yes, and he said, go back to the one where the heads on, you know, looking at them. So they take this, and it's going to be the second, the second. Till September for what? Like, why? I think he said something about change. So they take it, because it's going to be another year. So in other words, the point is, it looks like it's favorable to the mountain district, so these topics, we need to just wait until correct, and then we can discuss. Correct. Okay, the propane, the one that they already have, they already use already now. They can do it. But it's only, um, yeah, so they have, they have, we got, we got, we, they got, they set for five, okay? They replace it. But basically, they have a, what to, like, run their fire stations on gas and not like electric. Right now, where, um, energy expense, like, reservation, they said, like, wow, that there could be manufacturing only. Yes. Why, because I think it's, I think it better, I think it's a decision. Okay, so this right now is, um, they allow this, this is for manufacturing, and now they're in with... I don't know. Yeah. So, guys. Orange, that's a little more, you got shades over here, yeah. I'm really not that far, but I'm just like, oh, my gosh, I'm actually, I mean, it takes like a day for it to be here. I'm just right in here, by there, so I'm like, oh, you're going to be like, yes. But there's, I do a strength to highlight, if you want to jump to a lot of them, um, that they're on here, yeah, hard enough to, you know, prove, so if I just, you know, um, there's not as worse. I just, I, and then you say, okay, yeah, whatever. I'm learning, I'm learning. Okay. With all my salt, that's a no plus. Yes. I'm going to have another argument, and then a part of side, okay? And so, yeah, I'm going to, it's going to be, yeah. Yeah, I said, I'm going to second the session, I use this part, and this can be like, how many of the coaches, yeah, so it's a shot. I'm going to, 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 you know, the lighter than the things, I think, so I do like, uh, a little bit more time, so I'm going to, I'm saying, um, I feel, I feel, I feel so much better than I said. But again, I'm just, you know, I'm, I'm, I'm just like, oh. You don't ever, I don't like it, it's really kind of scary. And then, so like, Jake was, Jake, Jake, and this is the, so, 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 I'm saying, I'm trying to, and Jake, I'm trying to, it's not, it's not, you know, I don't know, today, you know, you have, um, it's, um, I'm saying, um, I'm, 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 like, things about, uh, usually, um, more, um, um, and, um, kind of, um, the, you know, same, um, and then we can use our, to, 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 to,